Good morning. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. This is May 24, 2022, County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are in on the end of the counter. If you plan on speaking, if you would sign in on our sign-in sheet. And we also have absentee voting going on on the other side of this door. So if you would try to use this door, please, or be quiet in the hallway if you happen to go north out of this room. All right, with that, I would move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Heiburger, I'd like to make a motion to remove item sixteen from the agenda. Second.
I have a motion as second to remove item sixteen from the agenda.
Second.
Oh, I have a motion as second, sorry. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Then I would look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved. Second.
And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number one B is consider a motion to approve the, oh, excuse me, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Rule call vote.
Barth. Thunder.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the opportunity for public comment if there's anyone here who wants to speak on something that is not on today's agenda. We'll move on to regular business. Item number ten is consider a resolution to declare disaster in Minnehaw County caused by a Durango storm on May 12, 2022. Jason, good morning.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. Here today to ask the commission to consider the resolution to declare disaster for the May 12 incident. So there's a threshold that needs to be met, and the reason we're kind of doing this now is because there's a deadline coming up on Friday for the, where the declarations need to be, where the declarations need to be in. So we're not at that threshold yet. And just to clarify, this is for public, public infrastructure. So roads, bridges, buildings, the cost that cities have incurred to clean up the debris, damage, damage that they've had on roofs. The separate part is the individual assistance. This comes after the, the declaration and the process gets a little farther into it. But we still are encouraging people to call in with their individual assistance with their damage to the 2-1-1 system. They've been a great help, and we appreciate people calling in and letting everybody, letting us know what damage they've incurred for private citizens, cleanup, buildings, farm, farm structures, and so on.
And we have been trying to get out the word. And so I talked to a few of my neighbors, and we didn't have electricity until some of us Saturday night and some even on Monday across the county. And so if you don't have electricity, you maybe didn't hear that you're supposed to call 2-1-1. So, and I've talked to people who've done it, said, take you five minutes. If you've got storm damage, please call 2-1-1 and give them a report on your damage so we can start making a record. And just encourage anybody you know or your neighbors, or put it on your Facebook page to try to get the word out. So that's what we've been trying to do. So this is a resolution. And Jason, would you mind reading it for us?
Yes. Whereas Minnehaw County, South Dakota, suffered severe damage caused by a severe thunderstorm with high winds on May 12, 2022. And whereas this severe thunderstorm, Duratio event, caused widespread damage to power lines, homes, businesses, residential and commercial accessory structures, and it uprooted numerous trees, which also caused damage to both personal and real property belonging to the citizens of Minnehaw County. And whereas the county, city, citizens, and power companies incurred significant expense and hardship. Now, whereas it be resolved that the Minnehaw County Board of Commissioners do hereby declare a storm disaster extending throughout the Minnehaw County for the population of Minnehaw County. It further be resolved that the Minnehaw County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare storm damage disaster and respectfully request the governor of the state of South Dakota to declare disaster area and request presidential declaration of disaster to ensure that the maximum amount of assistance is made available to affected local governments, businesses, and residents. It further be resolved that the Minnehaw County Board of Commissions respectfully request any and all assistance that may be available from the state of South Dakota and federal agencies be provided to all local governments and to the general population within Minnehaw County as we work to overcome this disaster.
Any questions for Jason? Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion as second. Rule call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is a public hearing to consider a special events on sale malt beverage retail license for the Suland Renaissance Association at the W H Lyons Fairgrounds ground on June 4th and 5th of 2022. Ben, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Today, we're asking for you to approve a special event for on-sale liquor wine retailers license for the Suland Renaissance Festival. The festival will be held on June 4th and 5th at the W H Lyons Fairgrounds. License will allow for the organization to sell wine so it can be consumed on-site. This application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Office, State's Attorneys, and planning, and there are no objections. We do have a representative from the Renaissance Festival here to speak on behalf of this.
Let her speak.
This is a public hearing, and so we will hear from the proponents. Good morning.
Good morning. We do seek the ability to celebrate our joust and our very good spring, beginning of the season with this Renaissance Festival. And a celebration in our time is not complete without ale, mead, and beer. So we ask that you give us permission to sell the same. We have knights in armor to keep the peace.
Great. Good. Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there anyone else that speaks in support of this event? Is there anyone who speaks in opposition to this event? Okay, Commissioner, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Rule call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Gramercy. We would invite you to come as well.
What are the dates?
Didn't sign in on our sign-in sheet. Please make sure that you do so that we can use it for the record. So I appreciate that.
And what are the dates of the event?
The 4th and 5th of June at the W H Lyons Fairgrounds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12 is consider a resolution establishing the number of allowable liquor licenses and the fee for various classifications of licenses. Ben?
Yes. Again, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. We are asking the commission to consider adopting the resolution for our annual resolution for the liquor license, the number of liquor licenses and the cost we have. Most of our licenses are set, the cost anyway, are set by statute. We do have some licenses that we do have the ability to set those costs for temporary licenses. Of those, those temporary licenses, we have four that we are recommending that we make changes to. We have a temporary special malt beverage retailer's license that we currently charge $25 a day for. We're recommending that be increased to $50 a day. We have a temporary special on-sale wine retailer's license that we currently charge $25 a day. We'd ask that also go to 50. We have a temporary special off-sale package wine license that we currently charge $25 a day. We recommend that go to 50. Keeping the special on-sale license issued for, at $50 a day, and the publishing fee also remain at 50. This is, we recommend these license fees based upon what we believe is our, are more close to our actual cost to, to prepare those. So I just ask for your consideration on those.
And this is strictly to try to cover the costs that we already are incurring. So are there any questions for Ben?
Just comment. I'm glad to see us doing this, Ben. I think, you know, sometimes we'll look at how many one-time license, licenses we grant to, for different events, and often suspect, why don't they get their own liquor license? So I think this is the appropriate thing to do. And to cover the cost, because, I mean, just, you know, the paperwork, the consumption of time and staff time. I'm glad to see you're, you're bringing this. And is, does $25 is additional for the publication fees also, right?
The $50.
Or $50. So it's $50 plus $50. So.
That's correct.
Okay. I was wondering, I thought $25 didn't seem high enough for a publication fee, but okay. Just wanted to make sure we're covering those things. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Again, Madam Chair, I, I feel that we are, in fact, still subsidizing these events. You know, when the auditor's office has to work on it, and then the sheriff's office and the state's attorney's office, you know, it adds up. And I, I'm not sure we've added it up. I think we are doing the right thing by increasing these, these charges, but I, I'm not sure that we have increased them enough. But maybe next year.
Any other comments?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Rule call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a public hearing, a second reading for the rezoning of 2201 to consider an amendment to the 1990, seems strange to say that, revised zoning ordinances for Minnehaw County to rezone the A1 agricultural district to a C commercial district. Mason, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mason Stephan Planer, one from the county planning department. Yes, this is a request to rezone approximately 15 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district. The parcels are located northwest of the Renner Corner on SD Highway 115, as you can see on the map on the screen. And to the south of this property, there are already existing commercial developed properties. This item has been for the planning commission at their April 25th Planning Commission meeting, and the county planning commission recommended approval unanimously. Therefore, since it's been before the planning commission and the first reading has taken place, we are having the public hearing for the final action before the board today. I'll just go over the PowerPoint a little bit if you want to scroll down, Trish. So this initial lot layout is just the initial lot layout for if it is rezoned. There is a preliminary plan for this property as well that was at the planning commission last night as the final development plan. This is just kind of the initial layout. I included it because if you look at the, along SD Highway 115 and along County 130 on the south, there are red Xs, and those red Xs are accesses that will be removed by the petitioner if the road, when the road is developed in order to have more, a more flowing access in the area. And then scroll down a little bit more. One of the main issues with this property, this property was requested to be rezoned in 2020 in front of the county commission, and it was denied. One of the main issues at that time was the floodplain. As you can see on this map here, the one on the left is the current floodplain for the property, which shows that it's not in the floodplain. The one on the right is the future floodplain map from FEMA. They're in the process of updating their maps, and Minnehaw County has not adopted the new map yet. So the one on the right is not adopted and effective for Minnehaw County. The petitioner has submitted data showing that they are not in the floodplain. However, that can't be submitted to FEMA until they're in the floodplain. So it's kind of a, once Minnehaw County adopts this and they're in the floodplain, they would have to submit their data to FEMA to be taken out of the floodplain. And then if we scroll down, it'll show a drainage plan. So this drainage plan has contours on it that show that they're more than five feet above what FEMA projects the floodplain to be on that property. And then I just have some pictures on the next couple slides. So this is the main lot looking to the east. It just kind of shows the accesses with the Renner Corner farther to the east there. In the right of this picture is the apartment complex that's currently on the property. That would stay until the petitioner has an owner who would like to develop that lot. Otherwise, the apartment complex would stay as a non-conforming use in the C commercial district. And we can scroll down. Here's just looking to the north along the apartment building. And that is the Safari Bar and Grill from the backside, and this parking lot is the parking lot for the Safari Bar and Grill. The petitioner has stated that they will be paving this parking lot as well as part of this. And I think I have, next picture would probably be the best last picture. So this is looking to the north. So this is the main area of the lot. As you can see now, it's pretty flat crop ground, and so the main lots would be on that property there. And then that is looking at north from the accesses for the Safari Bar and Grill. You can see the current residences on the left there. Two of those accesses, like I said, will be removed, and those houses will be removed. There will be a couple of neighbors there to the north adjacent to this commercial lot. And one of those neighbors did show up at the planning commission meeting. I'm not sure if they're here today, but. That should be everything. If you have any questions for me otherwise.
Your questions? I have one, Mason.
Sure.
So the small red box that's on the north side that is included in the whole rezoning part, or does not? And those houses were removed?
On the right side, those two right there, it is included, and those two houses are owned by the, the company that is doing this development. So those houses would be removed. Those other ones to the north of those that are not included are not included in the rezoning, and those houses would stay as long as.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kerski.
Couple questions. Is paving a part of the conditions? This isn't a CUP for doing this. That would have been last night. I mean, is paving going to be required?
Yes. Yep. So they'll have, they, part of their preliminary plan, which was approved by the planning commission last night, is the, the road has to be engineered, and they submitted road contours and road.
On the parking lot. The parking lot.
Oh, the parking lot has not been, that wouldn't be any sort of condition, I suppose, since you can't have conditions on rezonings or the preliminary plan.
Okay.
That's kind of just something we've discussed with the petitioner.
Okay. And you mentioned neighbors. Any objections or comments by the neighborhood?
The neighbors, so the neighbor directly to the north in that little area that's not included in this had issues in terms of drainage not being properly managed, which was brought up in 2020 as well. The other neighbors were across the highway on Windale Road. Their main concern was that they wanted it to stay agriculture because they felt like commercial doesn't belong in agriculture.
And these are small commercial lots in reality. I mean.
Yeah. They're pretty small, and they're for commercial, not industrial. So most everything in the commercial district would be inside, I suppose. There wouldn't be much. And any, any sort, if there was ever outdoor storage or anything, that is a conditional use permit. So if there ever was a request in the future to have something that wasn't all enclosed, that would all have to be approved by the county commission or planning commission.
Mason, you mentioned, can you go back to the flood map, please, Trish? So right now, is that zone C? And it's going to, or what, what zones are we talking about here? Do you know?
Zone for, in the floodplain?
Yeah.
So right now, it's not in the floodplain at all. The left one, you can see the blue is the 100-year floodplain.
Okay.
And that ends just before this property. On the one on the right, the dark blue is the 100-year floodplain. The orange is the 500-year floodplain. So Minnehaw County only regulates within the 100-year floodplain for our floodplain ordinance. So.
The base flood elevation is five feet below the, where these are?
So if you look on this, I don't have the cursor, but on the bottom left of that map, you can see a little number, and it shows 1441 as the base flood elevation for, and on the drainage plan, if you scroll down, Trish, on the drainage plan, this, the lowest elevation on this drainage plan is 1446.
Yeah. So the lowest is five feet above, and the highest is even.
Even more.
14 feet above. So, okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. So is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this rezoning? In support of the rezoning. So you want it. Is there anyone that, there's no one here that wants to support it? Okay. There you go. Can you just give your name?
Yeah. Ron Jensen, the developer and petitioner.
Okay. And if you would make sure you put your address on the sheet. Thank you.
I will.
Thanks, Ron. Go ahead.
Just, basically, what we're trying to do is be proactive about kind of improving, proving that corner and proving the access, allowing for future commercial growth, dealing with drainage issues that, just trying to overall improve, prove things and allow for future development. And we'd be happy to answer any questions anybody would have.
Any questions for Ron? Okay. Is there anybody here that wants to speak against this development? In opposition? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. So, commission?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion as second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Oops, sorry. Rule call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is the first reading to rezone 2204 and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on June 21, 2022 to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County to rezone from an A1 agricultural to a C commercial district.
Yeah. Mason Stephan Planer, one from the county planning department again. Yes, so this is the first reading for rezoning 2204, which is a request to rezone through, approximately three acres to the C commercial district. The property is located southeast of Rowena along County Highway 111, with the property directly north being a commercially zoned property, and the property to the south being a residentially zoned property. This item was heard at the planning commission meeting last night. Due to scheduling issues and the primary election on June 7, the short turnaround between planning commission and the first reading is necessary, so there are no delays with the item. Due to this, there are no minutes for the meeting last night. However, I can say that the item was approved on the consent agenda unanimously last night, and there were no neighbors opposed to it at the meeting. And then, I suppose, therefore, action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County that will be held on June 21, 2022, at or after 9:00 AM at a meeting of the Minnehaw County Commission. And just as a note, that meeting will be at Carnegie Town Hall, not in this room.
Good point. Are there any questions on this publication? Look for a motion. Motion to approve? I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is the first reading to rezone 2205 and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on June 21, 2022, consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County to rezone from A1 agriculture to RR Rural Residential District.
Yeah. So Mason Stephan again. So this request is to rezone approximately 35 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the rural residential district. The property is located directly west of the Interstate 29, at, directly west of Interstate 29 at the Baltic Exit. On the map there, it does show that it's down by Rowena. That was kind of just a mix-up on the map. It is over by the Baltic Exit. Currently, the north portion of the property is zoned for rural residential with the current Coachman's Manor Mobile Home Park, and the petitioner would like to rezone the south half of the property in order to expand this mobile home park. As with the last item, this item was heard last night, there, so there are no minutes. This item was denied after discussion with, with questions on the access for the property and the wastewater issues on the property. So it was, denial was recommended by the planning commission with a vote of three to two. So with this one, I would also ask that action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County that will be held at June, on June 21, 2022, at or after 9:00 AM at a meeting of the Minnehaw County Commission at Carnegie Town Hall again.
Okay. Any questions on this publication?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Again, there were a lot of issues about this one that concerned the group last night, which included that pond that you see just south of the, the conversation bubble subject property. That's where all the sewage goes. And as one of our dairy operators said, you know, he didn't think that a dairy operation could get away with having something like that on top of the water table. And so it was a three to two vote, or two to three, whichever way you want to think of it. And there are issues with this trailer park. One of the residents was there complaining about, about conditions in it. But as the proponent said, you know, we're looking at low-income housing for lots of people. There's only one entrance into the, into the subdivision, and the road is crummy. There is no addresses on these properties, and mail goes to the wrong person, et cetera. I mean, it's, need to pull up their socks on this.
Okay. We're just looking for a motion to, for the first reading to authorize publication.
I'll make that motion.
Day in court here. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 was removed. Item number 17 is the first reading for a major amendment of the 202203 and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on the June 28, 2022 to consider a motion to the revised joint zoning ordinance for the Minnehaw County and the city of Sioux Falls to amend Laurel Oaks Planning District, Develop District 14.0610 by removing, moving limits to hours of operation and to allow personal services as a permitted use within this subarea A, and to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the Laurel Oaks, or the Laurel Ridge PD, and remaining portion of the legal property described as Lot B, tract one, Laurel Oaks addition, and Lot A, tract one, Laurel Ridge addition, all in the southeast one quarter, southeast one quarter, section 24, 102, 49, Mapleton Township. That was a mouthful. Hi, Kevin.
Good morning. I am Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. This item, like the last two, were heard last night's planning commission meeting. This item, this property is located north of Sioux Falls, near the Veterans Cemetery along Slip-Up Creek, has been before you guys a few times in the last few years, as the property receives updates. This item has three different parts to it, as you heard, including removing limits to hours of operation, allowing personal services, and the rezoning of the remaining portion of Lot B, which is the, the highlighted red box there. At the planning commission, or the joint planning commission meeting last night, the city of Sioux Falls approved the rezoning for the remaining of Lot B, and approved an hours of operation change to allow for New Year's Eve to close at 1:00 AM in the morning, and the rest of the, the time would remain at the 8:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. The county made a very similar motion for the approval of the rezoning, but the closing time to be at 12:59. So that one minute of time will have to be reconciled at the, the joint city and the county commission hearing. Staff is recommending the hearing date be set for June 28, 2022, at or after 5:00 PM at the joint Minnehaw County Commission and Sioux Falls City Council meeting at Carnegie Town Hall. So.
Any questions for Kevin on this one? Commissioner Kerski.
Kevin, you know, the, one of the prior zoning changes, I'm always concerned about access off of roads, and we're spending a lot of money to rebuild this road to the cemetery. Was that part of the conversation? I mean, this is all kind of similar ownership. Does everybody need a curb cut to get to their property? I mean, can we, are we trying to control or direct the way that access to these lots are being given?
Access was not a big item of last night's meeting, because access was largely approved in a previous hearing for the final development plan. When the petitioner, so if I could, if you go to the, the east 200 feet to that square box there, is zoned for the subarea A for development, and the petitioner previously had a final development plan to put another event center in that east 200 feet, and that current driveway that you see there on the north side was approved as part of that final development plan. So you'd have the two driveways off the property.
And they're so close to each other. They're on a curve. It's going to be a busy, in my mind, a busy street. I don't know if the ship has sailed on getting maybe that looked at again. But going forward, I really think we should put more consideration into access off of those roads like that for the development. So I'd like to make sure that conversation gets had.
Commissioner Kerski, I will add on to that. I have talked to the petitioner. He did call me, and he was working through road access questions, and I directed him to the and I directed him to the Highway Department, the township, and he had already talked to the city of Sioux Falls. So, he is aware that there are possible issues, and he is working with the people who need to. I don't know if Steve's probably already talked to him, so that has been, that is definitely being looked at.
Good to hear, thank you.
If there are no other questions for Kevin on item number seventeen?
I'll make a.
We've set the date, June twenty-eighth.
I have a motion.
I'll make a seconded or make it, sir, whichever one you need.
I have a motion and a second to.
Madam Chair, I would make a comment.
First reading with Commissioner.
This was really a bit of a difficult issue, because there was not just a issue. We were changing the hours of operation, we're changing the character of the property. I think there were three items altogether that were involved, and I think, and the city approved an hour and we approved fifty-nine minutes. It's a little bit rough last night.
I have a motion and a second to approve the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item number eighteen is a briefing on the Sulan Heritage Museums. Mr. Hoskins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sulan Heritage Museums. Here to just briefly go over what some of the museum's current operations are. We have six great exhibits at the Old Courthouse Museum. Three were opened last year, and one, the Radioman exhibit, opened in April, celebrating the eightieth anniversary of the Sioux Falls Army Air Force Base, which really, and its impact on the city of Sioux Falls. We've got a lot of programming going on currently. We do a lot of educational programming in the schools, and after two years, we're back in the schools, very happy about that. And just an example of how during the week of May seventh to the thirteenth, we presented over a hundred programs in the schools to over twenty-five-hundred school kids. Some of our summer programming coming up includes our noon concerts, Friday noons in the plaza behind the Old Courthouse Museum. There are thirteen scheduled this summer. We have historic walking tours of a variety of neighborhoods on Thursday evenings, including kicking off with a tour of the Warehouse District next Thursday on the second. We have what we call our Into the Pit Quarry Tours. We're working with Knife River Corporation on providing bus tours into the pit. Very excited with those. They, they fill up quickly, so the tour is scheduled in May and June, our fall. We will be doing hopefully more in June, July, and August. We have our Historic Homes Walking Tour on July nineteenth. That's a program that we do as a fundraiser. We have four property owners in the Cathedral Historic District who are opening their homes for that special tour on that evening. That's a great fundraiser for the museum. We also have our day camps. We have Pioneer Day Camp out at Beaver Creek Nature Area, and in July, we have what we call Victorian Girls Day Camp over at the Pettigrew. Our collections management, one big change that we've had is a migration from our Past Perfect Program, which used to be on the mainframe, it's now in the cloud, and that has sped up everything else, sucking information through that straw. And, but it's also been a good move in terms of staff access and ability to enter. We have about a hundred and nineteen thousand objects on that database total, but we've moved our public access, has really been able to move the needle there, from about ten thousand items under the previous program to just over sixty thousand to date this year are accessible by the public, and, and we're moving that up. The real limiting factor on that is actually the staff cleaning up some of the database information and making sure everything's in there right. We've also had a major opportunity to help save the community's history came along, and, and part of that is the Argus Leader, which has been an institution on Minnesota Avenue, has sold their building, they're closing up, and so they came to the museum, and we've gotten about a thousand rolls of microfilm of the Argus Leader, about, my, my guess is maybe twenty thousand photographic images, all these photos that appeared in the Argus in the past, some bound newspapers, old Argus, but also some old papers from before that the Argus bought out. So, for instance, one of the gems that we found was a bound volume of the Sioux Falls Independent from the summer of eighteen-seventy-five. Anyway, so the collection, museum staff's working through that collection and how to make that more accessible to the public. Covid, Covid, Covid really, really reinforced to the staff, the museum, that customer service is key. It's key to our visitation and, and keeping those visitors happy and their perception of the museum. And that's probably one of the things we've really learned over the last year, re-learned, and are focusing on going forward. That, that's a real quick fifty-thousand-foot view, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Bill? Commissioner Karski.
Bill, congratulations to you and your staff. You have a great operation there. Just curious, and I've heard different things, so I just want to clarify, how often do you rotate the main displays? I mean, if I went to the museum once a year, for how many years would it be till I saw a repetition on stuff?
We have, we have six exhibit gallery spaces that we use at the Old Courthouse Museum. Our, our goal is eighteen-to-twenty-four month life expectancy for each of those exhibits. We're really aiming to open a new exhibit there every quarter.
Oh, wow.
So, if, if you were there two years ago, you might have one exhibit that's the same this time around. Things change over. The Pettigrew is a little bit different. We have three gallery spaces at the Pettigrew in the, in the museum additions. Two of those on second floor are longer-term installations that were really invested to last eight to ten years. And then, we have a exhibit on the first floor that's a changing gallery. It's set up, every, every other year, we change it out for about a twenty-four-month time period length of time for that one.
So, all the old stuff in the museum is new quite repeatedly, but not only do you have beautiful buildings to put these things in, if you've been to the museum once in the last five years, you probably haven't even tapped what we have to see.
That, that's exactly right. There, there are a few stables that stay out because, for a variety of reasons. The Faywic Flyer is more or less on permanent exhibition at the Pettigrew, at the Old Courthouse. Pettigrew's Buffalo is out on more or less permanent display, but, but the galleries, they change over on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Thanks, Bill. We'll be hearing again from Bill at one of our joint meetings coming up yet this summer sometime.
Yes, you will.
All right, thanks, Bill. Item number nineteen is a briefing on various divisions of the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office.
Morning Commissioners, Mike Milstead, your sheriff. As of May twentieth, your sheriff of twenty-five years. So, I was pretty honored to be, to be able to be here and, and to have served that long, and I've built a great team. You're going to hear from three of our directors. You're going to hear from Captain Adam Ziska, who is my patrol commander. You're going to hear from Jason Gierman, who oversees our Office of Emergency Management, and you'll hear from Mike Madsen, the warden of our jail. We have about, will be bringing about eight budgets to you, as we normally do, so it's a little complicated. Couldn't bring everybody here to talk about some of our updates, but I thought I'd give you a couple. One in particular is, as you know, on the twelfth of May, we had the response to the, the windstorm that came through that struck our county. It was unprecedented. I've been a cop for a long time, and I've never seen anything like that. And everybody I talked to who saw that wall of dirt and turned to midnight in the middle of the afternoon, all said the same thing. They've never seen it like that before. Within the first fifteen minutes, we had multiple medical emergencies in the county. Fortunately for us, the National Weather Service was very good and the Office of Emergency Management at updating us on the potential of the storm. And their certainty continued to increase throughout the afternoon. Because we saw that storm was going to hit fairly close to our shift change, we made the decision to activate early ends and laid out. So, we doubled our force prior to the storm hitting, and then we sent those officers out to area campgrounds, playgrounds, things like that, to let them know that this, this storm is imminent. And I think it, it provided a great response in the community. I was on the west side of the county when it hit, and one of the, the call that I, one of the calls I responded to was at, at the coffee cup in Hartford, where all the windows were out of the business, all the windows were out of the cars in the lot. It was chaotic, to say the least, but fortunately, few injuries. And, but then I responded to just south of Colton, where a family was, a husband and wife trying to get home to Wentworth, when, and, and traveling at probably under five miles an hour, when a board of, from a ripped-off roof of a structure came through the window of the car and, and killed, killed his wife. But I, I do want to say something. I mean, her name was Wendy Late from, from Wentworth. The response from volunteer firefighters, volunteer ambulance was, was second to none. And the local farmers jumping in their tractors across the county, but in particular where I was at that scene, they were there with equipment to move the trees off the roadway, push them off with payloaders and, and farm equipment to make way for the first responders. And we were flooded with first responders throughout the whole county. Every fire department was active. When I was at that scene, we had Dell Rapids ambulance was the transport ambulance, so we had volunteers from Dell Rapids ambulance. We had Colton Fire there, and we had an incident in Baltic, and that was responded to by Garrettson ambulance. All these are the volunteer first responders that we think of every day and the importance. And I will tell you that I, I watched you award the, the funds to equip those first responders with, with portable radios, some, to some eight-hundred thousand dollars. Hard decision, but the right decision. And so, I, I can tell you that I appreciate the fact that you recognize the importance of those first responders who came into the eye of the storm as opposed to seeking shelter. So, that's a storm event. I thought I'd update you that last night, we sent detectives to do liquor compliance checks throughout the county. We checked fifty-nine businesses in the county, includes cities and, and, and out in the county. I'm, I'm happy to report fifty-five passed. Sad to report four of them didn't. But there are consequences for those that don't pass those compliance checks. So, we sent detectives with underage individuals. This is a high, this is one of those times that we, we like to try to get these compliance checks done. We try to time them sometimes at random times, but in particular, in dangerous times. We're at graduation time, because they're coming home from college, kids are getting out of school, there's a lot of parties right now. Sometimes we do these close to proms or homecomings, holidays, things like that, where we know there's more underage people going out trying to buy alcohol. So, again, fifty-nine businesses checked, fifty-five passed, four failed. Last, I just thought I would, I can't, I can't get in front of a microphone without talking about the opioid epidemic and the crisis with fentanyl poisoning people in our country and our county and our city. Minnehaw County, just in the past year, has seen a forty percent increase in overdose deaths. Forty percent increase. Thirty-five people lost their lives in Minnehaw County last year to drug overdose. Half of those were opioid-related, many of which involve fentanyl. Almost half of them involve methamphetamine, which is unusual. We usually don't see that high of a number of methamphetamine, but we are seeing some cases where methamphetamine has, is tainted with fentanyl, so it's a combination of the two drugs. So, what's causing that? Well, we know that a hundred and five thousand people died in the last twelve months in America from overdose. Two-thirds of those overdose deaths come from fentanyl. Where, if you want to know where fentanyl is coming from, I think you know, but I will remind you, fentanyl is coming from China. It goes to Mexico. It's stamped by drug cartels and counterfeit pills that look like everyday prescription pills. They look like OxyContin, Hydrocodone, Adderall, Adderall, there's a number of Percocet. There's a number of pills that they look exactly like those. They show up, they're, they're crossing our border at unprecedented levels. Whatever your thoughts are on immigration, I will tell you that the fact that our southern border is not secure is allowing this poison to come into our communities at a level that we've never seen before. And, and, until that border is secure, we can expect more of the same. The DEA last year seized twenty million fentanyl pills, twenty million counterfeit fentanyl pills. Two out of every five were lethal doses. I had a, I had a mother talk to me just the other day that lost her daughter to a fentanyl overdose, and she was struggling to try to understand, why didn't the other person that was using drugs at the same time in the same home, why didn't that person die? And it's probably because he got one of the, the good pills out of the five, and she got a lethal dose. So, it's a huge issue in our county, it's a huge issue in our country. These are not overdoses, these are poisonings. The cartels know that these are often lethal doses, but they continue to flood these drugs into our country. So, I will say, since I have a chance at the microphone again, if you know somebody, or somebody that's listening knows somebody who is struggling with an addiction to these types of drugs, get them help. We hand out our overdose packet to every, every call that we go on where there's an overdose, or somebody struggling with, with drug abuse. It provides resources like the Link Health and Human Services Center, treatment providers, prevention materials, things like that, to try to help them through these critical times. But I'm more interested in you getting them help than anything. So, please keep that in mind, and, I don't know, when I talk about fentanyl, I, I seldom get invited to the Optimist Club anymore when I talk about this. So, with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll take them now, and then I'll, I'll bring up next, I'll bring Jason Gierman from the Office of Emergency Management.
A quick question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
Mr. Sheriff, thank you. Really a brilliant speech. So, my wife and I were talking, and I suggested that we buy a thing of Narcan just to have around our house. She said, why would we? We don't know anyone that does these things, but I, I don't think we know who might be. And so, I, just as a first aid kit, so to speak, what do you think?
Well, there, you know, Narcan fortunately is now available, is over the counter, it doesn't require a prescription. We have great pharmacies that offer Narcan available, so that it is there. I think you're right, in that we don't really know who the addicts are sometimes, and it could be their first time experimenting, that they, experimenting with this drug, that they end up with a lethal dose. And Narcan is, can literally bring them back from their, taking their last breath. And so, I don't think it's a bad idea, if you, especially if you have someone visit your home that you think, you know, may be struggling, and we don't know who's. I can tell you, a friend of mine lost two of his employees to overdose that involved fentanyl. They weren't trying to kill themselves. They merely had a pill, they ground it up and ingested it, and both of them died, and a third almost died. And so, it's not, it's not that, it's like they're trying to kill themselves, but that what they're using is so lethal. but that what they're using is so lethal that if they're off by a grain of salt. These are stamped in the cartel's clandestine labs. It's not done, you know, in, in a, in a true lab environment or a sterile environment. So, uh, you know, certainly I know people that have addicts in their family, they're arming themselves with Narcan just to try to save their child's life. But more importantly, get them the help that they need.
Thanks Sheriff, you're right, I don't want you at the Optimist Club. This is just a downer.
Thank you.
Thank you, we need the news.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Just give you a quick overview of kind of what's happening with my division. Um, I'll kind of start from the bottom of my presentation being the sheriff was up here talking about, you know, the storm damage and things like that with the first responders. Um, again, they are, uh, I'm the liaison for the ambulance and the fire departments. And when we walked out of the room after you guys, uh, gave them the money, they were elated. It's, it's something that they've worked on really hard for, so, um, uh, they really appreciate that. And it will be a big help. Um, we're a long ways from, from getting the rest of the radios that we need just because of the supply chain um, and, and just what's going on everywhere. Um, and, and that's, and that's for everything right now. Um, the ambulance, Sheriff Milstead mentioned the ambulances and I just want to give a, like an anecdotal thing about the Garrettson ambulance. So they were responding all the way from Garrettson and they almost had to respond to part of the west side of town. And I talked to the Ga- Garrettson ambulance director at the firemen's meeting last, last month. And he said he drove all over the county but never made it to one call um, because other first responders showed up as the calls kept coming. Um, but that's what happened, they, they just came out of the woodwork and, and showed up and, and they, they took care of things. So, um, you know, the other responsibilities that, that I have and the dealing with all the storms and all the odd things that have happened lately. You know, Iowa had tornadoes in December this year. Um, we've got a, a derecho that I've never heard of until now. Um, we had tornadoes in the late fall in Sioux Falls. So the weather patterns are kind of off right now, so we just got to be prepared all the time and not just the spring for the spring storms anymore. Um, so police reserves, kind of the unique thing that Minnehaha County has that most other emergency managers don't, um, deal with, uh, we have a strong police reserve, around fifty officers. Uh, we usually have a class every year, volunteerism is down, you're all well aware of that. Uh, we had to cancel a class last fall because we only end up, end having four people, uh, in the class. And usually we like to have the ten or twelve at a minimum because it takes a lot of officer, full-time officer time to come and train these people and do that. But we're hoping to have a strong class this year. Uh, rescue squad, um, these are the ones that get called out in the middle of the night. They volunteer, they go out and help the real fire, they fill their tanks, bring them water, get them what they need. Um, uh, I'm really low on rescue squad members, uh, we need volunteers, I'll throw that out right now. Um, but it's a good group and, you know, they work really hard. And then, uh, the positive, I have a dive team, that there's a waiting list to get on that. Um, there's a lot of people out there that love the recreation and, and want to get really involved. And we're going to host a dive rescue class in June. Um, it's something that we haven't did since I've been there, but that gets most of my divers certified to do dive rescue, um, that way, you know, for liability purposes, they've been trained on how to, how to, how to do entanglements, um, how to work with, work with, uh, evidence recovery and, uh, other recoveries, so. That's, that's the end, if you guys got some questions for me?
Questions for Jason?
Thank you.
Good morning, Adam.
Good morning, good. Good morning Commissioners, Adam Ziska, Patrol Division Commander for the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I just wanted to go over a few points, kind of the state of patrol right now for Minnehaha County. Um, first of all, I'd like to talk about the numbers, what we're seeing as far as calls for service within the county. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, so last year we saw an increase of nine percent. On the bullet points that I provided, you'll see that that covers a three-year time period that we're comparing that against two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. So we probably looked at that and wondered why we don't have twenty twenty on there. Uh, twenty twenty was a COVID year that lasted all year. Uh, with that came less self-initiated activity. Um, it's important to note that there wasn't a decrease in types of high priority calls and stuff like that, but in a world decreasing calls. Um, basically what we had decided at the time and what was decided, you know, pretty much universally across the country in law enforcement was we weren't going to necessarily initiate as many traffic stops, as many citizen contacts, and that was, reasons were twofold. One, because we make contacts that oftentimes aren't voluntarily. The deputies aren't saying, hey, I'm going to, going to talk to this person, but I have to go to this call. We didn't want to spread the virus to citizens and also we didn't want to come in contact by choice with people who may, may be carrying the virus. Um, but that being said, during that time period, we did see some interesting numbers. We saw an increased, um, level of mental health types of calls and an increased number of violent crime type calls. Um, so when we look back over that three-year period, um, we s- with, and looked at twenty twenty-one, we saw an actual thirty-two increase in mental health emergency calls. So mental health emergency calls mean that there's a component of danger to them. This isn't, hey, I'm feeling a certain way, can you, can you, can you send a deputy over here? I, I may need some help. This is a component where there may be a weapon involved, there may be other family members involved, there may be an assault that had occurred, or some other component that makes this an emergency. Over the same time period, we saw a twenty-five percent rise in violent crime calls, uh, in, in twenty twenty-one. Um, this is consistent with what Sioux Falls is seeing. And, uh, Metro Communications did a great job of helping me compile those numbers. Uh, so these are crimes in progress, come here quick, we, we, we need some help. Um, that being sta- that being said, staffing is going very well for us, uh, within the county on patrol. Uh, we continue to be a place that people want to come work. I have three trainees right now that are just about to get off their training period on June eleventh and they're going to join us in patrols full-time. Uh, one circumstance that we're battling is we've had, uh, two deployments back-to-back years, so four total. So we had, in the last calendar year, we had two of our deputies that were actually deployed to Africa, um, for a year, or four hundred and forty days to be exact. And now I have two more deployed to Arizona to help with the border effort, um, down there. And they're deployed for the same length of time. So, uh, when you talk about our numbers and how many patrol deputies we have, when you, when you have two gone and you have a handful in training, even though you're fully staffed, you're able to boast that, uh, it still, still takes away from our, our raw patrol numbers. Um, with our increase in call volume, with our increase in the types of calls that we're getting, uh, first-line supervise- supervision is always on the top, top of our mind, top of the mind of the admin staff that's, you know, listening or hearing what's going on during the day, uh, hearing about incidents later, reading about incidents and realizing the gravity of some of these situations. I'd like to talk about our contracts. Uh, we have a relationship with Southeastern Technical College that we've had for years. Um, right now I have two full-time deputies over there that we call campus security officers. Um, they are longtime, uh, Sioux Falls police officers that retired and then picked up this job. Uh, they seem to be enjoying themselves, they're great liaisons, uh, to the school for us and we feel very comfortable over there as well. Uh, with our air guard, we currently have sixteen staff. These certified deputies work alongside, uh, security forces at the airbase. Um, they do everything from security checks to physical security where they're looking through your car as you're pulling up. Um, this has actually been used, our model has been used nationally at different types of bases as a model, uh, on how to do policing at this, at, at that, that level. In the airport, I have twelve part-time employees right now. They provide physical security all the time while screening is in process, so while people are, are going through the, the security stations with TSA to get to their planes. Staffing any part-time position anywhere is, continues to be a challenge, um, but we have a great working relationship for the, with the airport and we're able to liaison with them quite easily. We have upcoming community events, uh, these are our big ones and they're all happening in June. Dell Rapids Quarry Days, uh, June twenty-fifth, Garrettson Jesse James Days, June eighteenth, Hartford Jamboree Days, June seventeenth through the eighteenth, and a new, uh, event called Auto Mania is happening in Valley Springs, June twenty-fifth. Um, the big one that we have every year, our biggest community event is the fair. That's happening August fifth through the thirteenth. We've already started working on security protocols, uh, looking at historical things that we've done, looking at what went good last year and what didn't, and, uh, planning for those things already. So that brings me to the end of my comments, does anybody have any questions?
Thanks Adam, questions for Commissioner Kersky?
Captain, thank you for being here this morning and thank you for the work that you and all your deputies do. Um, one thing that really impresses me, well, first of all, congratulations on the, um, for the airport recognition and the security there, that's, that's fantastic. How many patrol deputies do you have?
Uh, right now I have thirty patrol deputies full-time.
And a lot of them are kind of the, the permanent police in different communities. Hartford, Dell Rapids, I can't remember, but, you know, what we do and you are the law enforcement in so many of these communities and I think that's a great, um, business model or model for a lot of other communities that could follow, or counties that could follow. So, um, thanks for, you know, what you do and how, how well you do it, I guess, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Karp?
Um, Captain, I, I, you know, I'm kind of jumping ahead here. I, I read, uh, the warden's, uh, comments about the jail. So out in public, are you finding people, uh, not being respectful of the uniform? Are you finding people more likely to, you know, fight? Are you, I tell you, it, I'm just a citizen, but it seems like drivers are getting worse. Uh, you know, it was tailgated today, passed without a signal, et cetera. I mean, uh, what's it like out there?
Uh, for us, I, I would have to say, you know, I, I worked in Portland, Oregon for a number of years before coming here in two thousand thirteen. And that's just one example that, that I draw from and I can say positively, this area and the country is, is very good to their police. Uh, especially what I've experienced as a deputy sheriff is, was, was a whole different footing. Um, I feel like when we come around the corner, people are, are happy to see us as opposed to the opposite in most cases. Um, I will say that, you know, with these contract towns and Commissioner Kersky is exactly right, we try to provide the same faces to those contract communities, naming, namely Hartford and, and Dell Rapids where, where we have a major presence, um, so that people can get comfortable with us. Um, we started a community engagement committee within the Sheriff's Office that's this year, um, that's, that's really grabbed a hold of, um, identifying where people are going to be anyway. And then we provide deputies to, to those things. So we've always been a part of these communities and, and that has helped us, uh, build this, the respect that we have through most of the community, um, and their residents. The one thing I would say is that people that have committed to a life of crime, um, are in and out of our jails. Uh, those are the type of people that we also encounter into the, into the communities and that's what the citizens expect us to deal with, um, something that they don't necessarily, you know, want to. Uh, it's something that we're happy to do and we do experience that as well. As far as our officer assaults and things like that, um, we haven't seen a major, on the patrol side, we haven't seen a major influx and I, I say that as the training that we're providing these deputies, the, uh, crisis intervention type training that we're requiring, the ongoing mental health type training that we're requiring, um, the technology that we have to include tasers and things like that, less, less than lethal means. Uh, we have brought incidents of, of officers being injured, I, I feel like way down, even as violent crime calls go up. These, these deputies today and the officers in Sioux Falls today are more equipped, uh, to handle these situations and it's keeping everybody else, including ourselves, more safe.
Thank you Captain.
Yeah, thanks Captain, anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
We have one more. Morgan?
Good morning, Warden Mike Matson from the Minnehaha County Jail. Um, as you are all aware, the past year for the jails has been a difficult one. Uh, much like other departments, we experienced things that we have not encountered in the, in the past. Uh, staff had to adapt to these changes, adapt to higher, a higher level of stress, um, increased workload and high demand for overtime. We saw an unprecedented turnover rate of thirty-one percent in twenty twenty-one, which you were all aware of. Um, we held seven new hire classes, uh, comprising of forty-five new officers. Twenty-one of those officers are still with us. So far in twenty twenty-two, we've hired twenty-seven new officers and we have retained twenty-five of them. With current vacancies and resignations that we are aware of, uh, we are, we currently have six positions vacant on May eighteenth. However, we have, we will have thirteen in the background process for classes starting June thirteenth and July twenty-fifth. Uh, recruitment and hiring, um, has been consistent through twenty twenty-one, um, in twenty twenty. Uh, human resources has worked very closely with the two jail lieutenants and they've done an absolute spectacular job recruiting and, and getting people in the door. The frequency of new hire classes and the constant new hire training is welcomed to get new officers trained and working on their own, but it's an example of another task that now has become a regular task. We do this every day, we've done it for two years straight. With the action, uh, that the commission has taken this year, I'm optimistic that we'll see our turnover rate decrease. Um, I'm also proposing a couple new positions in twenty twenty-three budget that can be funded through ARPA funding. I believe those positions will help with retention as well. Um, today's offender is very much different than years past. Um, very different from when I was a corrections officer back in two thousand four. Um, they require a lot of attention, they have little to no respect for people in uniform. They're quick to argue, um, and difficult to hold accountable and routinely disrespectful towards staff. I did a breakdown of twenty twenty-one incidents. In total, there are ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven incidents that were documented last year. Um, now just a brief explanation of an incident. This is something that requires at minimum documentation of an occurrence. Um, it doesn't, it could be as simple of a conver- conversation that we need to document or it could be a use of force incidents, incident where we have to send staff and use force to control a situation. Um, there were two hundred and thirty instances where the jail staff had to use force to control a situation in twenty twenty-one. That's more than one use of force every other day. Uh, we have seen a forty percent increase in the major rule violations in the jail. We had six hundred and eighteen of those last year. A major rule violation could be something from inmates fighting to an assault, to theft. Um, there's a variety of major violations that, um, we deal with. Um, I broke down more, we had one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five general information incidents. Um, like I said, at minimum, that's some documentation that the staff ha- have to take time to do. Uh, a hundred and eighty-six emergency hospital visits that require staff response, documentation and sending a staff member to the hospital to guard the inmate. This is a sixty percent increase from twenty eighteen. Um, forty-eight suicide attempts that staff had to respond to, render aid and had to document. Hundred and eight medical emergencies that staff had to respond to, render aid and document. Um, some data from categories that I did not include that had significant increases include informal discipline, um, that was a fifty percent increase from twenty eighteen. Mental health observation, uh, sixty percent increase from twenty eighteen. And in twenty twenty-one, there were eleven incidents involving staff members being assaulted and so far in twenty-two, we're up to eight. Our average daily population in twenty twenty-one was four hundred and sixty-four. So far in twenty-two, we are seeing our average daily population at four hundred and eighty-two. We are trending in a manner consistent with Bill Garnos's projection. This means as the number of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County inmates increase, the fewer number of federal and other county bed rentals are available. This is reflected in our twenty-three, twenty twenty-three budget, uh, revenue proposal. Uh, we reduced the federal inmates from thirty down to twenty. Jail capacity is currently five hundred and seventy-nine, um, with unit control three being vacated. In twenty twenty-four, we're going to have to start begin staffing, uh, for unit control three, uh, in twenty twenty-five. We continue to monitor our occupancy level to determine when this will need to occur. However, when we do have to hire additional staff for unit control three, it will be a substantial amount. Questions?
Questions?
Commissioner Bender? So, Warden, I, I know that we have, I mean, that turnover was a real issue.
Yep.
Takes a while to get your staff trained and up and running and so we've spent a lot of resources to try to, uh, bend that curve for you.
Yes.
Um, so that you can, um, retain people. We put money into recruiting bonuses or intention bonuses and just in base wages. I'm curious whether you think that, um, being able to retain staff long-term will help you with some of these other kind of troubling statistics that you cite today? I mean, do you think that having a, a more consistent, more experienced staff, it would help with some of these other inmate management issues?
I think that, I think that will help. Anytime you, you have an experienced officer as a as opposed to a, not as an experienced officer. It will help situations. We provide great training to our staff, great training to the new officers, and besides that, we deal with managing people, and it's inherently difficult. You never know what you're going to get. So.
I'm curious whether you think that there are other things, I mean, other things that we could be doing other than just expect that this is going to continue and get worse?
I propose a couple new positions for two thousand twenty-three, one of which is a housing sergeant. I think that's going to be beneficial to have, much like our intake sergeant. We have a sergeant that's dedicated to intake, that manages that area Monday through Friday, that keeps things consistent through the shifts, they manage all the problems, they've taken ownership of that area. Why wouldn't we do the same thing for our housing area when we're seeing such an increase in incidents and the types of incidents that we're getting? If we have that person that can take ownership of that area and, and really manage those incidents and be there for the staff to guide them, that will be basically a second sergeant for the shift sergeant to help manage all those problems.
Thank you.
And turnover is extremely expensive, and as you were talking about the numbers of people that, you know, start out in a class and then don't make it all the way through, that's a lot of money lost in the county, and so we do hope that we can start to retain some of those employees.
Yep.
Thank you so much for what you do. We do support our law enforcement here in Minnehaha County and also the volunteers. I think it was mentioned several times about all the volunteers, not only the fire departments and the, and the fire and the ambulance that are all volunteers. A lot of farmers came out and, and helped in a huge mass, so we appreciate all those people that put their energy into assisting us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, Sheriff, you don't have any final comments, do you? Sheriff, you don't have any final comments, do you? Okay, all right. With that, we'll move on to item number twenty, which is consider a motion to accept the MacArthur Foundation's grant funds for the Just Home Project, formerly known as the Equitable Housing Demonstration Project, and authorize the chairman to sign the following associated contracts agreements between Minnehaha County and there are three different groups here, and we're going to do one at a time. Is that okay? We'll talk about one, and then we will do the motion. So the first one is the Urban Institute.
Perfect. Yep. Good morning, Commissioner Kerry Benz, Human Services Department. I'm actually accompanied by Aaron Surska with USD and Amos Abu with Ahab, and he's part-time county, part-time city staff, so if you have any questions, they're along to help answer those as well. So before you today are three agreements that we need to have in place in order to move forward with the grant funds that we've received from MacArthur. In the past, you've heard us talk about the Equitable Housing Development Project, and MacArthur has changed that name now to that Just Home Project, so it is one in the same. So the first agreement that's before you was the agreement to allow Minnehaha County to actually accept the ninety thousand two hundred dollars that will be a part of our planning phase. We're already in our planning phase and are a few months into that. They give us six months to do our planning, and so the first agreement is just an agreement so that Minnehaha County can accept those funds and become the fiscal agent for that.
So is that the Urban Institute one?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion on the Urban Institute contract.
Would make a motion to approve the contract with the Urban Institute.
Second.
Have a motion and second, we need a roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero with one out of the room. Okay. Do the next one is University of South Dakota.
Okay. So for this grant, USD is the Center for Rural Health Improvement. They will be contracted for fifty-two thousand dollars, and attached in that agreement, you'll be able to see and view their scope of work. Basically, it's really facilitating our meetings, being able to basically herd cats, doing all of the coordination with not only Urban Institute but MacArthur Foundation as well. So really, it is just trying to bring full circle, all of the data that we need to put forward, as well as all the reports that we'll finalize and summarize once we have the grant complete.
Any questions on that contract? And USD, this group has done our other past MacArthur grants, so they're familiar with the players in the game.
Correct.
Look for a motion? Look for a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the USD grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and second. All those in favor say, oh, excuse me, roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is Maximizing Excellence LLC.
Okay, so Maximizing Excellence is also a part of this grant. We've contracted with Maximizing Excellence so that they basically can do some of that work for us. They basically will be facilitating our meetings. We really felt that it's critical that when we bring this number of community entities together to try to have a great conversation, we really want to maintain that neutrality and having everything remain objective so that at the end of our project, we really feel that it is a community-based project, and we've been able to adequately hear and take into account what everyone has to say. And so Maximizing Excellence will basically do just that. They'll facilitate our meetings and help us stay organized.
Okay, so to approve the contract with Maximizing Excellence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender. Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. We're done. Thank you. We'll move on to item number twenty-one, which is the William H. Lyons Fairground Task Force Workshop Review. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is the report that has been put together by Charlie Smith, and we do have Charlie Smith on Zoom and on the phone. We're just working through all our connections at this particular time. Anyway, Minnehaha County contracted with Charlie Smith for the first step of reviewing the current fairgrounds. Smith was in Minnehaha County May first through May fourth. During that time, he had a chance to meet with the task force and also to assess both the site and the facilities on the fairgrounds. Smith's site analysis workshop report, which has, which is attached, and we will go through that, looks at significant features of the site, such as the flow of people, parking, flow of animals, et cetera. Smith also looked at opportunities and constraints, along with significant issues. The site analysis workshop report serves as the basis for the subsequent phases of master planning, and the task force had the opportunity to review the report and provide feedback to Smith. So Charlie, can you hear us? Oh, we're going to go through.
You're on mute, Charlie.
We're going to, Charlie, how's this work for you?
That, I think that'll work fine. I could not, I do have my computer on mute, so I don't get feedback, so we'll just call the phone if that's okay with you. Is that saying to be working?
Does this work okay for you guys?
Yep, can you pull the microphone down just a little more? Is that as far as?
I will. It's as close as it goes. Let me find something to set it on, so I raise it up just a little bit.
Yeah.
That's clean.
We're improvising here.
We're improvising, Charlie.
Okay. I've done that before.
Okay, how's this sound? Little bit better? Charlie, we will, we've got the PowerPoint up.
Yes.
And just for people's background, this is our last Tuesday meeting in this room. Eventually, we will be upstairs, and we're going to have much better setup for Zoom meetings and bringing people on board. So with that, Charlie, I'm going to turn this over to you. The commissioners are anxious to hear from you.
Good deal. Well, I do have the screen up and shows the number one site analysis diagram, and of course, as you mentioned, we did go through a significant site analysis process on the existing site, and I'll have to commend the task force for sticking with us and meeting with us so many times. And in the back of the report, you'll see the signup sheets and who all came, and we've had great participation and, and input through this first phase of the process. I won't go into detail into each of the sheets. I will just generally hit some highlights, and we'll get back to some of the significant issues in light of time. The first slide you see has to do with the regional access, where are people coming from to get to, to the property? And let's go on to slide number two, the slide number two. And it is very interesting that locally, we get about a fifty percent distribution from the north and the south, once we get all the traffic from the region collected, so to speak, which is good in that we don't have one hundred percent coming in in one direction and really clogging up the road system. So a pretty healthy distribution of vehicles arriving at the site. Now, these are attendees. We'll talk about the service vehicles and the livestock trailers later. Slide three, please. Number three, we start to look at how the people actually move in the site itself to the different parking lots, very easy from the north side of Madison, fifty percent going into that lot, fifty percent coming up from the south into the paved lot, and you'll see the little blue sparkles. We're looking at where the different people are coming in from the, from the site. One interesting thing is that on that top fifty percent, a lot of those people are moving all the way down to the main gate. That's why sixty-eight percent of the people are, are coming down there, and I think we're going to look at some improvements to the, to the orange gate and distribute the folks a little more evenly throughout the site. At the south end of the property, you see the livestock and vendor gate. The issue there, and we'll see it in another slide, is that those people are typically coming in off hours, so they're not, we're not blending livestock trucks with attendees. Next slide. Pedestrian circulation. I went back and Carol provided me a historical diagram, and that's the way it began, the green area circulation with a straight mall north and south, and then the bow shape. That's the way the site was laid out originally, and it hasn't changed since then. Next slide. This, this does address the issue of service access, where all of that is required to come from West Twelfth Street up and be checked in, and then come into the site from the south side, off hours. Next slide. On animal movements, I'm looking at any conflicts that we might have between animals and people, and in this case, you're very fortunate to kind of have a back road there where animals can be moved from one area to the other without crossing a pedestrian path. Next slide. Adjacent land uses, we're looking at what are, what are our neighbors like? You're fortunate to have, not have a lot of residential next to you, you've got commercial to the east, the quarries to the, to the west, and to the north. The issue with residential, when it's right next to you, is that those folks unfortunately become a little unhappy, the more popular, the more you use the site, and we're really pushing towards a three hundred and sixty-five day use site, so I think the land uses are very compatible adjacent to the property. Next slide. Looking at the who owns what, we always want to be designing on property that our client owns, and it is county-owned property. Next slide. Site topography and drainage, we're looking at ponding, flooding. Basically, the site is relatively flat. We do have a few areas of ponding which can be improved with some simple grading. Next slide. Site expansion, very limited. There is some city-owned property, however, it has some environmental issues to the south, but somewhere along the line, you might strike up a conversation with the city regarding the use of that property. We might be able to put livestock trailers on it, things of that nature, probably no buildings, but you're basically landlocked with the exception of that piece of property. Next slide. Easements and restrictions, I think everybody understands we do have a deed restriction that exists, and it has a five-year reversion clause, meaning that if you don't use it, use the site as a fair within five years, it goes back to the original owners. There are many fairs that have a one-year revision clause, and during COVID, they had to ask for some exceptions, so again, there is a deed restriction on the site. Next slide. Environmental conditions, we know of no negative conditions. We, and the soils are basically sandy with gravel rock, and the rock is about four to seventeen feet below, depending on where you're, you're drilling, but it's good not to have any negative environmental conditions that we would have to mitigate on this property. Next slide. City-county limits, the current project is within the city limits. We use county building codes, however, the fairgrounds were exempted from operation from the city of Sioux Falls ordinances, and the site was annexed into the city in nineteen seventy-eight. Next slide. Zoning and comprehensive planning, you'll see that the, that the property for the, the fairgrounds is properly zoned, is recreation, the adjacent property to the west is zoned agriculture, and then we have commercial to the east. Next slide. And I might just mention, this process is a process of identifying any issues. It's kind of called problem seeking, and we're trying to identify significant issues about the site and about the buildings as we move forward. The site layout axes, as I mentioned earlier, shown in red, is the way the original site was laid out, and I don't see us changing that significantly in the future. Next slide. Vegetation and landscaping, sorry that we've lost so many ash trees. I'd like to see us come back and add some more of those on the north-south mall so that we do add some more greenery to the site. Generally, the site is very green with grass and trees. Many fairground sites that I work on are just asphalt, you know, so I think we have a pretty green site overall, but we would like to replace some of those trees. Next slide. Views and vistas, there are a few views from the interstate over towards the site, and then some approach views off of Madison. However, there are really no long-distance vistas, anything that we want to protect, you know, a major mountain in the background or something of that nature, so good, good views of the site from the west and the north, no views of the site from the south, however, since there's commercial space there. Next slide. We're looking at solar orientation, just in case we do have some changes to the grandstand or have another performance area, we want to be sure we know where the sun is rising and setting and, and if it's anybody's eyes or whatever. So your grandstand now is currently oriented properly. It's interesting that the winds are from the southeast on summer and from the northwest in the winter. Typically, what we're looking there is that if we have residential next door, that we not have manure smells going into a residential community. Part of that is operational, and I think Scott and his group do a very good job of turnover and removal of manure from the site pretty quickly, so it's not an issue. Next slide. Site utilities and capacities upgrades, we've got an awful lot of old utilities there, and we do have some significant lines that need to be replaced, and when we get into the next phase, we'll be working, we'll, we'll subcontract to a local civil engineer to identify some of the more significant needs and what those costs might be, so they will show up in the master plan as utilities that are needed. It's interesting, we completed the master plan for the state fair, and I think item number one on, on the, on the needs list, and that will be funded as a new sewer line to their new building, because the other one was just coming apart. So you will see some lists of utilities that will need upgrades in the future. Next slide. Architectural themes and images, there are multiple architectural themes I'd like to see in the future if we do additional buildings or renovation of existing buildings to try to get to a common color scheme to give us more of a campus look. Next slide. This slide is just looking at the different zones, where the carnival is, where the livestock is, where the exhibits are, things of that nature, where the entertainment is, and I see no zones that are out of character or out of place, no issues there. Next slide. The non-fair use zones, we have car sales and races in the paved areas, we have concerts in the grandstand, and we have a lot of use of the expo center, rodeo, livestock, craft shows, and say those things of that nature. We've got a mixture of uses in that building, and I think in the long term, we're going to look at. We've got a mixture of uses in that building, and I think in the long term, we're going to look at separating those out so that we have what we call a clean building and a not-so-clean building so that you don't have odors going into the expo hall, things of that nature. But we'll address that in the next phase of work. Next slide. Opportunities constraints, I'm, I'm not going to hit all of these. Hopefully, you may, maybe had a chance to read through a few, but I do feel with your location and your, your really great access, which is shown as number two, back to number one, that you can become a leading exposition park in, in the region. Right now, you have limitations due to some of the buildings. Number three, I mentioned about enhancing the clean and not-so-clean facilities. I'll drop down to number five. We really have like the 4H and small animal buildings, some real significant deterioration there that have been patched up over the years. We will show you some options of repair and, and our replacement of those buildings. Uh, we want to increase the usage of the site on a year-round basis. I mentioned number eight before. Number nine, fairgrounds tend to be flat structures, low structures, and we like to oftentimes have a themed tower. That's an orientation point to tell people to meet me at the tower, for instance, at 2:00, and there'll be a restroom there and an information stand, whatever. Number 10, we're going to look at the grandstand. Looks like that capacity probably could be increased. That will come out of a market analysis that we'll be proposing in the next phase. Under the constraints, site is basically landlocked. Number two, always, that's always the case, isn't it? The constraint, budget and funding, where does the money come from? And in the fairgrounds business, we do have quite a few sources that we'll be talking about in the market and funding study. The other constraint, number three, certainly the deed restriction is a significant constraint. And then number four, the expo hall column spacing is really not adequate for an awful lot of different livestock shows, rodeos, a little too tight, columns spaced a little too close together. We'll look at several options on that building when we get into the next phase. Uh, next slide. Significant issues, site is relatively flat, drains well. Number two, I just talked about existing buildings in need of replacement. Number three, will probably be a pretty big ticket item, utility upgrades. That would be phased out over a number of years. Number four, the trees we talked about. Number five, the expo center ring size and column spacing. Number six, as I mentioned earlier, separating the clean space from the not-so-clean space so that you don't have livestock odors in a area where you might want to have a wedding reception or a trade show. We'll be talking about number seven, some thematic vehicular entrances, some portals to the site that stay there on a year-round basis that kind of announce the site and the fact that the north parking lot should be paved. Next slide. The appendix, I'm not going to go through all of that. It does include all the sign-up sheets and the, the description of the three-phase process. Let's go to the next slide. And go down, that's, that's me and what I do, and we love working for the fairgrounds. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, there are your three phases. We just finished step one, the onsite workshop. We included the site analysis. We played around with a few alternative concepts, but nothing that was worth presenting at this time. The next phase would be the phase long-range master plan. It will include market demand, an economic study, as well as the physical master plan, and we'll be pulling together a proposal in the next few weeks for that. Utilizing both our firm and other national firm on the market work, a local market demand firm, local civil, civil engineer, probably a local contractor to help put some pricing together in that cost of construction in Sioux Falls may be different than Florida or whatever. And then, once you finish the master plan, you decide, well, what is it that we really want to build? And that's where the selected facility comes into play, and you move into the first phase of whether it's utilities or renovation or, or new buildings during that phase. But that will be identified in step two when we all get together and talk about phasing. So I think, Carol, I'm just going to leave the rest. I think the rest talks about a lot of details of the, the next phase, and I'll stop at that point and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Are there any questions for Charlie? Commissioner Karski.
Charlie, what has been the role of the task force so far, and how do you see them being utilized going forward?
Well, first of all, the task force, and I've got all their rest places, is really a wide variety of folks. First of all, that are very interested in the fairgrounds. It's interesting that you've got, I think, 47 applicants. We have 17 on the task force. The role was in this process to provide input during the study, to walk the grounds with us, to go through each building, to understand the, the conditions. And I see them in advisory capacity, reviewing the work that we're doing and providing input both back to the design team and to the commission.
Additional questions? Carol? Comments?
Charlie, thank you very much for that. Next steps as we look ahead. Charlie has up there right now the second phase. The next phase of the work will include stakeholder, user group meetings, public input, and the market demand competitive analysis and economic impact report. The agreement for the next phase will come before you on June 24th, which is the next time you'll meet as a commission on a Tuesday, and that, or June 21st, sorry. Smith will join you by Zoom probably that day to go through and present. So we'll be working through with the attorneys as we get that set, set up. Charlie, I know is already having some conversations with those who will be doing the market, the analysis, the economic, to see what's the impact of the fair out there. I think a lot of questions really hinge and decisions will hinge on doing that. I think he's already, at least we've been having conversations about, talking to local contractors and local engineers about the utility, utilities and the state of the buildings that are out there.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll look forward to the next conversation. Okay.
Charlie, anything else you want to add in closing?
No, I think, I, I believe we had a very successful step one with good participation. We're proud to present the report to you and look forward to moving into the next stage.
And we will look forward to being able to hear you and see you better in our next room, next month.
I look forward to that as well in your new room.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Charlie. Thanks for hanging in there with us for an hour. Next, we'll go on to the commission liaison reports. Any reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
We did have that planning and zoning meeting last night, and I've got to say, it was one of the more difficult meetings for me because there was not a clear answer for, for some of it. You know, there was the one issue for the trailer park expansion where the sewage was odd. There's the other issue where we're changing the zoning, we're changing the hours of operation, we're changing, you know, all of that, and it was difficult. And even the easy ones like the, the Renner development was not that easy. So additionally, I would say that, you know, I'm on the, the board for the East Dakota Water Development District, and they're looking at, we had a resignation, which was Steve Dick. He had to resign because he took a federal job. And we're also redistricting the, the, where the board members come from. And if you move out of the district, you're out, and if, you know, you move into someone else's district, you're out and until the next election. And so the exact boundaries of those districts is still up in the air. And I guess that's most of it.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Karski?
Last week, yeah, Wednesday, we had a strategic planning meeting for the link. We were supposed to have a board meeting today, but we kind of covered a lot of board items for the link last week. It was 10:00 to 1:00, so it was a fairly long meeting, very well attended. There had to be roughly 20 people that attended. All the board members were there. Mostly, we're just kind of, in my mind, what I think came out of it was kind of staying true to the mission of what the link was supposed to be. And maybe, you know, there's always that intent, or what happens over time is it kind of broadens in scope, and we're just trying to keep it where, in my mind, should be. Yeah. So we had that last week. Like I said, good meeting and well-attended, and I thought it was definitely worth the three hours that we spent there, so.
Not seeing any other liaison reports. Are there any non-action commission discussions? I think Carol's going to give us a summary of the next month, maybe, my guess.
You read my mind very well, Commissioner.
Yes. We have a lot of stuff going on.
Yes. So the next time that you meet will be June 10th. You will meet in this room, which is, two weeks from today is the election. And one of your roles as commission is that you canvass the vote, and you have a timeframe by which you can go through and do that. You have to have it done by that Friday. So you will be meeting June 10th, which is on a Friday, by nine, at 9:00 AM. I know that it's a little bit of a challenge in the summer, so we'll be picking a couple of you up by, by phone. So, and we will also do an abbreviated meeting. We want to recognize and honor our vendors who work with us all the time, and we want to get them paid. So we know that they're waiting a couple extra, there'll be an extra weekend there, so we will be doing bills on that day. We'll just be doing a consent agenda is what we're working towards. Budget meetings will take place in this room, June 14th, 16th, and 17th. And those are the last meetings you will have in here because demolition will start the following Monday on June 20th as this area gets turned over to the state's attorney's offices. So June 21, June 28, you will be meeting at the city council chambers. City council has been great partners with doing it. We're a little bit iffy about July because we're waiting for a piece of equipment to be shipped for, that will make it all possible for us to get the meetings on, on Channel 16 and on YouTube and on our website to go through and do. So we're just, we've been told it will ship June 30th, but as with everything else, nobody knows until it absolutely goes and gets picked up by the delivery person if it's actually getting shipped on that date. So we do have July unreserved with the, with the city council also. So those are the dates. We'll continue to keep pounding them in as we talk about different things as we're looking at it. We know that June's a busy month for everything. Thank you.
Okay. Any other non-commission action items? Commissioner Karski?
Voted today, right next door, yes. And the ladies over there that are working, love to see anybody that wants to come early. I visited with them briefly. There's 179 different ballots, according to them, for our county. I think our auditor, Ben Kite, has done a fantastic job with the coordinating and just the, the logistics and the sheer volume of things that have to be accounted for. So I just wanted to commend him on that. But yeah, if you can get, vote early, do your homework, come on down to the courthouse. From what I've seen, limited line to no line at most times. You can be in and out probably in under 10 minutes. So if you want to vote early, get it done.
Commissioner Barth.
I totally concur with Commissioner Karski. I do have one other item, though.
Go ahead.
The journalist that covers us for the small newspapers, Dave Beimweister, won some awards for journalism this year, and he also got an award for his editorial writing. It's all here in the, in the Garrettson paper, but I'm not going to read it. But we, we're being covered by award-winning journalists.
He does a good job of covering our, covering us, yep. And I'm going to bounce a little off of Commissioner Karski's and say, not only our auditor, Ben Kite's doing an amazing job, but his staff, who a lot of them are new, have really, they dove in and they're doing a fantastic job down there in that office. So we need them all, so. If there are no other non-commission actions, I would, there's no exec, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Tyler.
Adjourn.